Good afternoon and welcome to the September 15th, 2021 Climate Change Action Plan Focus Work Group of the PG CPS Board of Education. I'd like to welcome all of our workgroup members, all of our special guests and all of our, everyone who is tuned in to watch us live today. And of course, this meeting is being recorded and will be available on our pgcpss.org backslash climate webpage. Today's agenda is focused on labor, present and future. And we will soon get into our topic areas after we go through a little bit of order of business. So at first, I would like to turn the workgroup members' attention to the approval of our July 21st, 2021 meeting minutes. And I'd like a motion and a second and any discussion needed on those minutes. Anyone for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a second?
I will second it.
Thanks. Any discussions? Folks see anything that they need to note? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Any knows? Any extensions? Okay, great. The minutes are approved. Next, same thing, I'll need a motion and second and any needed discussion around adoption of today's September 15th, 2021 agenda for the Climate Change Action Plan Focus Work Group. Motion from anyone?
I move.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you, Donald. Any, any discussion? Okay, here, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any knows? Any extensions? Okay, great. Moving forward, our agenda is approved. So thank you all so, so much. And again, welcome to everyone, as folks are coming in. Great to have you back. And it's been a couple of months. Hope everyone had a, had a good summer and want to thank everyone for all you did to help us reopen in full last week on September 8th. It's been an amazing first week, week back. And, you know, just thank everyone for going above and beyond for making that possible. And special shout out to our bus drivers and to our transportation team who are working very hard to help us reach a point where we have our on-time service. And that's probably our biggest challenge in the system now. And now, looking at our agenda, I am pleased to take a moment to welcome our new student members. Since we last met, our, we, we had a vote by the board of some changes to our work plan and changes in membership, and that included three new student members. So I would, I'll introduce all, let me see, so I know Jabari's here. So Jabari Woodbury from Fairmont Heights High School in the 11th grade. Jabari, would you like to say hello and introduce yourself? He might be, he might be busy.
In the chat, it says that he couldn't hear. I think that he's trying to resolve an issue.
Okay, I see it. I got it. Okay, thank you. And then Brianna Malcolm, who's a student at Eleanor Roosevelt High School in the 12th grade, is with us. Brianna, are you able to come on right now and say hello?
Oh, yes, I can. Give me a minute. Hi, everyone. I'm Brianna. I'm a senior at Eleanor Roosevelt, and I'm very excited to be working with you all.
So happy to have you. And then Nathan Gudera, who I don't think has been able to dial in yet. He did let us know that he'd be finishing up class and will be on the bus. And hopefully, we'll be in and listen mode at that point. But he is Oxon Hill High School, 11th grader. And one thing about all three is that they were very active in our May student forum, and then went on to be active participants in the county's climate action stakeholder meetings. So very experienced students, and I look forward to their contributions as we move forward into drafting our plan. Next on the agenda, we're moving into just a quick review of our upcoming schedule. We will, I hope everyone will take a moment, just pull that up and remind, remind yourselves of those dates. And David Smith will start getting out the invites. We're moving at a faster clip. We will have meetings almost every other week until we wrap up our special topics in our eight mission areas, mission areas around December 1st. So just a reminder of that, a reminder that our subgroups, everyone has a link to sign up for your subgroups, and you can join, you can join more than one if you have the time. But I don't think everyone has filled out the, the form. So if that's something that you still need to take a moment to do, please do that. And we will begin the process of formalizing some more, you know, steps around the, the, the subgroups and getting our work done. So actually, Joseph, I think I jumped into part of your agenda items. So what I'm going to do is have you take over from here to introduce some of our other general housekeeping updates that we have. My apologies.
Oh, no worries, for member Boozer Strather. And I did post the, the upcoming schedule in the chat too, so everyone can see it. We are going to get into our five special topics now on the, that are more on the technical side after today's conversation. I guess for three, what's next? Research request update. We've been talking with Valerie about the data request, and some of the data is starting to filter in. It is going to all be shared. It's all going to be put into the shared drive, what we are able to obtain. The, I think the first tranche of stuff that involves building data is already been put in there. The folder is called site docs. We, I think we've also started to see the, the transportation data, but I don't think that's been put over yet. And I'm not sure what the status is on other data sets that we requested. So Valerie, if you had anything additional to add?
I can only add that I spoke with Dr. Fawcett a couple of times, and I know Jamie's on the, on the, on the Zoom. And she and Dr. Fawcett and other folks are working on getting as much of the information requested by us, to us as soon as they have it. So it's coming, it's coming to us, but it was a huge data request. And because right now is a very busy time, and so we're gonna, you know, let them get it to us when they can get it to us. And so they're working on it.
Thank you. And also thank you to all the staff that have been putting together this, these data sets. I think they'll be useful for both our work and work, the work of PG CPS at large. So it, but we will keep you informed as the data comes available. And if we do have to change the schedule around a little bit because a data set hasn't been obtained in time, we will let you know. Any other, any questions on research request? And last up, the outreach survey. We, we, now that school is gotten started and things have started to settle down, we'll, we'll be putting out the outreach survey and a newsletter. I don't believe the date has been determined, but it, I'm expecting it'll go out prior to the next meeting that we have on October 6th. I don't know if Kate, if you had anything else you wanted to add there? Or anyone?
No, nothing to add at this time.
Okay, well, that is all I had as far as announcements. So I will turn it back over to Board Member Boozer Strather for our discussion on the CTE program.
All right, great. Thank you so much, Joseph. And, you know, going back to our meeting objectives for today, you know, we're, we're looking at understanding how jobs in PG CPS and related to PG CPS will change as we move forward with climate action, understanding what training and reskilling is needed in the current workforce to support climate action. And really, really what we're looking at is processes rather than really getting into the specifics of those, of those skills. We're looking more at, you know, how we, how we all move forward together towards new policies and changes in operations. And then where we're starting is understanding how the CTE program is supporting the development of green jobs. And I'm really pleased to welcome Dr. Cadet, who is the, the Director of the Program, and a special guest who, we just found out yesterday could join us, is our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Judith White. So this is really, you know, just incredible opportunity for us to have a conversation with both of them, learn about the CTE program and learn about, you know, the, Dr. Cadet is going to take us through a presentation. And I think we're going to have a great conversation. And then we'll make sure we, we bind our, our time allotted for that conversation. And then we'll move into our second panel. So with that, Dr. Cadet, I'll turn it over to you for introductions and, and taking us through the presentation. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jean-Paul Cadet. And introductions. This will be my 25th year in Prince George's County Public Schools. I started as an English instructor at Forestville. From that time, I've also served in several other capacities, Assistant Principal, most Principal of Oxon Hill High School. And I'm currently the Director of Current Technical Education, where we work with over 35 pathways that are designed specifically to provide students with access and exposure to potential careers and career fields that they may have an interest or want to explore as they pursue whatever their endeavors are post-graduation from Prince George's County Public Schools. So before I, before I go into my presentation, I'd like to give my boss, the Chief of Academics, an opportunity just to say, bring her greetings.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. I try to make sure that I'm out supporting my team when they have to do presentations if I can. And this was a very intriguing topic. I know one of my other teams came, and Donald speaks so highly of this team and just the way in the organization that you all bring to your work group. So I am ecstatic to, to be here and witness it and to hopefully allow Jean-Paul to bring some clarity to the programs we do run and listen to what you have to offer as we always strive to do that.
Awesome. So I am going to, is everyone able to see my screen? Cool, perfect. All right, so. One of the things we've, we always say in seats, so I will, I will reference between CTE and current technical education, but it means the same thing. So the focus of current technical education is it's all encompassing. And one of the main points, if you, if out of everything else I'll say today, is current technical education is not the same mode or model of vocational education. Two totally different spaces, two totally different eras. So the things that I'm going to explain or share with you this afternoon are, I'm, I'm giving you the, the new emboldened, re-envisioned concept of current technical education. So as an overview, CTE focuses on making sure that we are exposing students to careers and opportunities that focus that are grounded in three spaces. They are high wage, they are in demand, and they are high skilled. So the things that we are preparing our students for, they're not your average entry level positions. We are training them for supervisory executive level experiences in addition to all encompassing every level and every modality of employment. So when students are, have completed one of our programs, they are able to be immediately competitive. They graduate with credentials and licensures. And they are also, and they graduate, CTE students graduate at higher rates than a non-CTE student. And the research says that it's primarily because they are able to incorporate and integrate what they are learning in their core subject within their CTE courses. And they're also fueled with a passion because they have a better drive and a better understanding of their why. I said that, we just talked about knowing your why. So, so this gives them a clearer insight as to their why of what they want to do as they pursue their endeavors post-graduation. So CTE, we offer two, three and four-year programs. There is an annual application that students must complete in order to be enrolled and participate. Students are able to either participate, if they want a program that is not in their boundary school, then they're able to go to one of the other neighboring schools that offers the program closest to their residence. Every, all, and I know that one of the questions was, how was the curriculum set? A lot of, I might say the majority, 85% of all CTE coursework is designed by either, is either provided through MSD or provided through one of their accredited partner, partnering institutions. And most importantly, most importantly, the culminating experience that all CTE students have is that they will take the technical skills assessment, affectionately known as TSAs. So the TSA is simply this, it is a certification test the students must complete in order to receive their certification, licensure and/or endorsements upon graduation. The cool thing about TSAs are they are the industry-level certification examination. So you can have a senior at Gwen Park High School taking that TSA. That test that they're taking is the exact same certification qualifying examination that a 30-year-old coming out of grad school wanting to go into the same field, if they wanted that credential or that license or certification, they will take the exact same test. So we are preparing our kids and we are, we are preparing them with the certifications and credentialing that they would need to make decisions that can shape their life in whichever way they see fit. One of the more important things about that is current technical education is not separate from college. It is not, um, that if, I know sometimes we'll say colleges, college is not for everybody. You're right. When we say that, too often that is followed with, so those kids should go to CTE. No. Any student interested in pursuing anything in their life should be in CTE. Because it, it, again, it is about that exposure, it is about that access that lets them sample and explore potential, potential career fields, again, where they may be, where they, where they may have an interest. In some cases, students may have started off, I give you the example of the young lady who was interested in nursing. She said her mother was a nurse, her aunt's a nurse, her grandmother was a nurse, her cousin's a nurses. She's going to go, go into nursing. We said, absolutely, sure, come on. She got into our nursing program within the first year. She said, you know what? I realize this is not for me. I do not like blood. I do not like needles. I need to do something different. And interestingly enough, and, and you know, we talked to the parent and the student about switching into something different. And the mom said, do you know how much money you just saved us? Because she would have, we would have spent all of this money after she graduated to go to nursing school and do all this training, do all of these things. And by the time she realized what she learned here for free, we would have spent a lot of money. So thank you. The student went on to participate in the, the seat, the Certified Clinical Medical Assistant Program, another one of our medical field programs that best suited what, what, what she felt comfortable with. So although we weren't able to find a fit for her in nursing, we found her, found a fit for her in medical assistant. So we are, again, trying to prepare students in a way that is unprecedented. And we're also preparing them for things that may, we didn't even know what exists. We've all, we're all experiencing the pandemic. And one of the most interesting things that came out of, when we were looking at reopening, there was a outcry and outreach for any student, anybody, any human that was, had the CNA certification, the Clinical Nursing Associate Certification. All the students in our programs that went through our CNA program had that credentialing. That meant that they were able to provide the vaccination at, at different vaccination sites with that credentialing and with that certification. So we are, we, so that's just an example of how CTE is able to train and provide resources for an immediate need in today's world, you know, as, as we speak. So one of the, so we, we do, again, this is not the VOTE Tech of old. So some of our future-ready programming in terms, looking at green technology is around coding. We are, one of the things we, one of the several things we're most proud of is our Student Bill House. And the Student Bill House, it has students in every different field coming in and literally working to build the house. I mean, from foundation to furniture to HVAC, to electrical, to security systems. We even have students come in and do the interior decorating. And they, they look at the colors, they look at the palettes, and they do all of the things from our Family Consumer Science pathways, where students are able to come in and they're able to literally design a house. So within that, we talk about what is the coding? How do you code to make sure that the house is built as a lead gold or lead silver house? So they look at the coding that needs to go into the thermostat. They look at the cloud we code, the blinds, that they do automatic reflection so that you can dim and cool the house based on the temperatures outside, those types of things. We looked at different gaming options and app development that promote healthy eating and, uh, what is it? Zero emissions lifestyle. So those are some of the two things we were working on. We're also looking at drone technology and geospatial intelligence technology. Again, looking at the different aspects and different sectors that we can impact, that we can intersect with so that our children have that experience. And we're also developing them to work in those fields that will best sustain our environment. So let's talk about the future of CTE and PG CPS. So this picture in particular, it's, is purposeful. The school on the upper left is considered a school of the century. And when we talked about what a school design, what a CTE school design could look like, we talked about it being environmentally conscious. We talked about having farm-to-table, farm-to-table greenhouse access. So our students in our culinary and prostart programs will know, will be able to go, grow, develop, cultivate, and then figure out how to provide resources, sustainable resources to our communities. We also looked at, um, just the, the way that, the infrastructure and the way things go. We talked about healthy lifestyle, about breathability, that which is why you see all the greenery in that sample of the building. So that's a, that's a pretty, ah, yeah, that's what we like. You'll also see that we have, we're, we're focusing a lot of our effort around solar panels and turbine, turbine technology. Because if you look in the very middle, we said, wouldn't it be awesome if through CTE we could figure out a way to power the National Harbor? Imagine the power of students building a grid that is purely built on solar and wind that could power the National Harbor. So that's one of our aspirational goals and developments. Because we understand that as the world changes and as we now had to, you know, we'd still, we're still in the middle of a pandemic. And a lot of face-to-face is not always, is not always going to be the most conducive thing. What are some of the online virtual experiences that we can provide to not just our students, but to our stakeholders as well? So we are looking at a lot of things around AI, artificial intelligence. We're looking at a lot of things around virtual reality, around augmented reality, so that we can present things that are all encompassing and that will capture, not just capture, but prepare our students for every level moving forward. So here are six of the cluster areas that I'm going to discuss. Some of the work we're doing around information technology, around our construction trades, around engineering and science, environmental studies, homeland security and architecture and design. So CTE in green. What I, so in looking at the, um, the, the focus of this particular committee, we went and we identified the particular cluster of CTE where the program sits. We looked at the specific pathway because we have multiple pathways under a cluster. We identified the program and activity that speaks to the work done by or supported by this committee. We also specified how it relates to being a climate conscious or green solution. And then we aligned it to your submissions. So what you'll see is, so we tried to show that continuity of what we're doing in alignment to the work this committee has already dedicated its time, effort and energy towards. So looking at our IT, um, we work with several programs that integrate real-world solutions and help them solve problems, especially around natural disasters. And so in IT, they were looking at creating, encoding programs that can assist with the wildfires in California. So they were looking at developing sensors that can change, that they can detect any changes in soil temperature or degrees by which the wind is shifting so that they can also figure that out. And they also wanted to work, do some work around predicting, not really predicting, but looking at rain and how that can also be a factor in terms of the dry land area that is subject to forest fires. So again, the work that they're doing there aligns to your submission number six around stormwater and land management. Our JRTC, they focus a lot on community service. So they do a lot with Adopt a Road, Adopt a Road, Adopt a Highway and Bike-A-Thon initiatives. Again, working on reducing our carbon footprint and working on engaging people around healthier lifestyles and cleaner communities. So next, in terms of homeland security, again, we do a lot around looking at disasters, for lack of a better word. But with homeland security, they look at emergency preparedness. They, so they go through different scenarios. I've actually had the opportunity to go with them to the Emergency Command Center in Capitol Heights. And they run through an entire disaster scenario. And students are able to say, all right, well, if we plant more trees here, that can create a buffer in case of this. If we make sure that there is a water runoff here, that can also be addressed whenever there's construction. And it will also help develop a marshland, it will also create a different ecosystem, and it will also help provide greenery in the, in the environment. So through that, that's also looking at our, you know, your submission one and seven, based on the work that they're doing with that. The, the cluster and pathway that specifically is most closely aligned with the work of this group is our Environmental Agriculture and National and Natural Resources Cluster. And we specifically focus on the pathway of animal and natural resources. And as you can see, we are, we have a project with the Anacostia watershed, where we are working to make sure that we are doing freshwater restoration, we are doing coral restoration. We are doing, they're out there testing the pH of the water, they're making sure that it, it can sustain life and that life can flourish so that that ecosystem remains intact. And then the other side of the environmental agriculture is also working to make sure that we have Maryland Green Schools. So we are aligned with the Chesapeake Bay Watershed Agreement. And we are making sure that we are partnering with our schools to make sure that they have all of the resources and they have the capacity to become acknowledged as a Maryland Green School. And that speaks to three of the CCAP submissions in terms of food and food waste, materials and waste cycles, education awareness. Next, we have our Human Resources Services under our Public Safety Academy. And their initiative is called Zero Unnecessary Waste. So they look at energy, energy conservation, the repurposing of items and reducing the use of paper. The cool thing about this particular initiative is that over the summer, I had the opportunity to see some of the things they were doing. And they, their disposition is, is And they, their disposition is, uh, it started off with the slogan, one person's waste is another person's eco-friendly, uh, what was it? Eco-friendly accoutrement. And I was like, eco-friendly, that's different. But they showed where, you know, they had looked at, um, they had gone to a, a development trash. And they had identified cinder blocks, they'd identified broken down furniture. And they said, well, if we use this, this can be a greenhouse. Oh, not a greenhouse, but this can house plants. They had another thing they repurposed it and said, this can be used as a bookshelf. This can be used as a community, um, community fixture where people can place books for donation and that it can serve another purpose. So their thing was how do you repurpose, um, different materials that have been discarded in an effort to reduce our land, reduce unnecessary waste in our landfills and also provide eco-friendly solutions to community needs and community services. I kind of preface some of the work that we do with our construction development, uh, when I reference our student bill house, which is the fifth activity there. But we also have several other activities that we incorporate and that we are training our students in as they are in the field working, um, through our construction and development. We also have our apprenticeship program. So Prince George's County is the only school district in the state of Maryland that serves as a registered apprenticeship provider. That means that we say that we will train our students and after we train them and make sure they certify, we will hire them. So currently we have three cohorts of apprentices that have gone through their training. And in the summer between their junior and senior year, that is when they come on board with Prince George's County Public Schools and they begin their apprenticeship program. These students are out in the field with our building services crew and they are the ones that are filling in, they are filling in, um, walls. They are repairing ceilings, they are doing electrical work, masonry work, HVAC work, you name it in the, in the building services. One of our students is alongside them, working with them and, uh, oh, and fulfilling those, those work orders. So that was a high level, quick overview of some of the programs and activities that we, oh, wait, I skipped one altogether. I apologize. I knew I missed something. Projectly, the way engineering, they focus on recycle, on our recycling program and our paperless classroom. Again, trying to mo- move towards, um, a wasteful, a wasteful mode where we are not unnecessarily discarding anything that cannot be reused and does not have purpose. And again, also with our fire and EMS, um, pathways, we are again, um, supporting the green school initiatives through our recycling efforts and other initiatives that they are being trained alongside Prince George's County Fire Department leaders. In terms of how to, how to deal with natural disasters in the space of fire, how to do fi- fire prevention and what are some of the best, um, eco-friendly solutions that can be used to ensure that we are sustaining a safe, a safe space and a safe environment. Now, with all of that, we look towards the future of, uh, CTE working with our students, our stakeholders and community members to provide a green, beautiful future for our students. Thank you.
Oh my gosh, thank you so much, Dr. Cadet. I think if, if I asked the question, how many of you realized all this was happening in PG CPS? I don't think we'd have too many hands go up because that was incredible information. And thank you for aligning it to our mission areas. That was a, an extra step that, um, is just so helpful as we move forward. I'm, I'm assuming there's some questions from the work group, so I thought I would just, uh, pass to Joseph to lead us off. And then we'll, we'll take a couple of questions. Uh, we have some time before we start our next, next panel.
And thank you so much, Dr. Cadet. That was really informative. And I, 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 I wanted to second that it was really nice how everything lined up with, uh, with the focus areas. The one question I had is, so let's say a, a new green career comes along that we haven't envisioned as of now. How, how would the curriculum be developed for that? Like sort of what is the process, the timeframe?
Good, great question. So we, we will look at the, we will look at the scope of all possible, all course offerings that can be provided from MSD. Um, and then look to see where there is an interest in which schools to pursue that particular green, um, occupation. And then we would work to develop, um, a plan of a program of study that would match the skills needed to support students going into that field.
Edge on Paul is that whenever we're going to add a new field of study, we have to also look at our teaching core. That we don't need additional staff. If, if a particular teacher can't also, um, bridge in that course as a prep. And so if that means that we have to get additional teachers, then during our budget cycles, which are usually one year out. So like, we're getting ready to go in a budget cycle right now for a school year 22, 23, where we have to make a proposal for an enhancement that we need to then add in for the board's approval to add additional positions.
Exactly. Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Cadet. So, so I know that we have a lot of buildings within PG CPS that already have green features, like we know that we have geothermal systems already in play. Are we taking students out to those sites to provide them training on, uh, hooking them up? Or any of that, or putting them together, building one, or?
So the cool thing is, is that we have several partnerships with a lot of construction firms and a lot of construction, um, companies. And as per like this past year with, um, so much being virtual, we actually had, um, members of, I want to say it was Gilbane and Associates. They were out on their work sites and they had their GoPros. And they were demonstrating to students in real time how to set up a geothermal well, how to do these different things. In terms of having the students go to different schools right now, now. Because then that's, because we try not to do too much pulling kids out of school during the school day. But a lot of the things that they are exposed to, they are exposed to learning those techniques and those, um, skills while in class in their construction, in their construction core, um, courses.
No, thank you. And just to, um, just like, I guess as a flag, there has been some legislation that has passed in Annapolis that has heightened the activation around geothermal. And just making sure that our school system is tied to that so we could take advantage of the new hiring or the tax benefits that come with, with tapping students like ours in, in, in those fields, in those green fields. So, and I want to say great, as usual, great presentation.
Thank you so much.
Mary, would you like to jump in? I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for. Thought I unmuted. Okay. Can you hear me now? Yeah, I, I love those real world exams you gave, gave along with the program description. So thank you. It helped me personally. And I'm sure other people visualize the, you know, some of the many opportunities there are. I couldn't help but thinking when you were describing the apprenticeship program for, um, you know, those students, uh, that get involved. I guess it's the same ones who get involved with the, um, construction of the model home. That, you know, when you look at, at PG CPS and its inventory of buildings, right? We have 205, 210, uh, buildings, many of which, I think the average age of which is 40 or more years old. So it seems to me, I would hope you're thinking, someone's thinking along the lines of, of taking these young people and, and applying their training to retrofitting buildings. There's far, far more work to do on the retrofit front than there will be. You know, frankly, over many decades in building brand new schools. And that just is such an enormous, you know, uh, air potential and opportunity to green our existing buildings, to do our part and then some to counter, you know, climate change and, and global warming. Can you comment at all on that, on what, what that, um, either does look like, what's being done or what could be done?
Sure. So this is, um, again, our third year in terms of developing our apprenticeship. Where you, our registered apprenticeship group. And right now they are primarily working alongside our current building services teams that when they receive a work order for any types of repairs, they're going out and they're assisting. The idea of the retrofitting and upgrading, that's a great idea. Um, and that's something that we can talk about for future reference, for future, you know, future consideration.
If I could ask a quick follow up. You know, I hope if you haven't been, um, that you would be in touch with Senator Pinsky from Prince George's County and delegate Dana Stein from Baltimore, um, who are the lead sponsors of the Climate Solutions Now Act. It did not pass in the 2021 session. They, you know, House and Senate Conferences worked right up until the 90th day and just couldn't come to an agreement. But an important piece of what they are looking to do in greening existing buildings are all of our school systems across the state because of how many collectively thousands of buildings school systems own and the opportunity to, to retrofit them and reduce the emissions from them. And I, I don't think maybe there was enough engagement on the front end with the 2021 bill. I know I've talked to Senator Pinsky one on one and really encouraged him to, um, you know, proactively reach out to school, the larger school systems especially, certainly PG CPS, to make sure everybody's kind of on the same page. And there isn't, you know, a feeling that there are things maybe being forced on school systems that perhaps they're not ready to do. Or that they, you know, uh, have other, other priorities or other, other ways they might want to go at, um, greening their buildings. But, uh, you know, that, that work is any of you that have ever been involved in, you know, in, uh, in the legislative process in Annapolis, you know that the work gets done, you know, well before the, the 90 day session gets underway. Because then it just goes by at warp speed and it's, it's most, not always, but often too little, too late. So, um, if you, if you'd like me to help make that connection, I'm happy to. Or if not, if you know how to reach those folks, that, that would be great.
Absolutely. We would love the connection.
Yeah, because they, they will be bringing the bill back. Definitely. Thank you. And, and Pamela for indulging me.
Yeah, thank you, Delegate Lehman. We're definitely going to be moving on our legislative subgroup soon. So look forward to working with you on that as well. I do note here, uh, Jamie, Jamie Austin, uh, gave us a little update, uh, uh, in the chat, if you'd like to speak to that. Anyone else have questions for, uh, Dr. Cadet? Jamie, you want to jump in on some of your experiences? Or I would even welcome Donald Bell or anyone else who might, uh, have some, some things to offer in this conversation.
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Cadet, for your, for such a passionate presentation. Really, really great. And I know we've had an opportunity to connect before with, 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 uh, Pepco, with their programs that they offer in conjunction with CTE. And I know that's continually a work in progress. And, um, to Delegate Lehman's question about, you know, having students to participate in retrofits. We did have a, a opportunity at Charles Flowers High School. Uh, this, uh, school actually was retrofitted with LED lighting the summer of 2019. And interestingly enough, we also were hosting the summer youth employment program at Charles Flowers High School that year. So a lot of students really got a chance to see what was getting ready to happen. And then a few of the educators were around and saw some of the lighting coming down and wanted to use it as a in, um, instructional moment for their students. The approved service provider also offered some apprenticeship opportunities. However, when they notified us, it was just a little bit late for us to be able to, you know, to get some students involved. But, um, it's, it's something that, uh, will continue, the opportunities will continue and we'll continue to, uh, share those with Dr. Cadet and team as we are notified. But I think, you know, what, um, Delia Lehman mentioned is really, um, a key point in terms of the retrofitting projects that are, that are taking place, not only with lighting, but, um, windows at many schools, uh, to help us with energy efficiency. And of course, we know about the HVAC systems and so forth. So, uh, really timely. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jamie. Uh, Michael, did you have a question?
Yeah, well, I, I guess I could piggyback on Jimmy's, uh, comments. And actually I was going to ask about just the opportunities for actually partnering with, with, uh, SCO companies to do energy audits. And I'm drawing on an experience I had when I was at Howard University where we involved a particular company in a, in, in like a pilot project where the actual students in the business school actually went through, went through with Ranger, who's a big supplier, you know, learning how to do an energy audit. So even before they start changing the lights and talking about the windows or the roofs or so on, that they actually walk with them and they have the calculation sheets. And so, well, if, you know, if you replace 200 lights, how much energy are you going to save? And what, you know, what are the things to target? You know, they, they have, the lights tend to be like low hanging fruits. Like, like you mentioned, Jamie, it could move towards, you know, HVAC and so on. But I think it's so, it's, it's a good learning tool. If they get, you know, at the beginning of the process rather than when, uh, it's actually, uh, happening. And it's relatively simple, uh, relatively simple to implement. And once they've done one, you know, they can probably do, you know, several others and it could serve as a kind of a template. When you start talking about energy retrofits and making the buildings more, you know, these hundreds of buildings that they're so old are more, more energy, more energy efficient.
Yes, uh, a good point you raised with learning how to do the, uh, energy audits. We also had another opportunity that was made available through Exelon. And that was via, um, the energy energizing student potential program that we have at many of our, I guess, our elementary and middle schools. We had about 30 schools to participate. We're now entering into, I believe it's going to be our fourth year. And these students actually learn how to, uh, go and participate in audits with, you know, with the lighting as well as they also tap in with water. And outside of this, they also have experiences, uh, opportunities to go and venture out at the University of Maryland where we actually walked through, we walked through many of their buildings there and audited them with students. We have the instruments. Um, we also looked at photovoltaic, uh, systems. And we, they actually provide the instruments to measure the light as well as the hydrometers for the humidity in the rooms and also the temperature of the water. And this also took place at Drexel University as well as Illinois Institute of Technology. So what you're saying, we are, we have the opportunity to expose students at a very, at the elementary age and then also to do some work even at the high school level as well.
Thank you so much, Jamie. Uh, Dr. Cadet, any, any other responses on, uh, Michael's comments and questions?
They're just great ideas. Um, I know that our students do have exposure to some of those experiences. I know that pre-pandemic, you know, they were going out to construction sites and they were doing some of those things. And in terms of early exposure, every summer we host a CTE explorers camp for our middle school students who are about to enter into high school. And during that time, students are able to engage a lot, you know, the ones who choose that they want to try out the construction pathway. They do end up on actual sites over the summer and they go through all of those things. They're learning it hands on, um, getting that tactile experience. So absolutely what everything you're saying, I'm like, yep, that's where we are. We've, of course, you know, in this 18 month gap, you know, some of that has kind of fallen back a little bit. But those are definitely things that are still on our radar to move forward with as initiatives. Because our goal is that when students graduate from Prince George's County Public Schools, that they are the most competitive, they have the highest competitive advantage over anyone else graduating from any other school in any other place in the country. So we want to make sure that they are at the top of their game, that they have, they are equipped and they know how to deal with any, the highest level of technology within whatever field they choose. And that they are the most, uh, first and most prolific in that particular field of study. So everything, everything that Michael said, yes, we, we try to make sure that our kids will have that experience. And where, and where there any gaps, I'll make sure that those gaps are filled in.
Yeah, that's great. That's excellent. I'm so glad you mentioned the summer explorers camp for CTE. Yeah, that's great. That's excellent. I'm so glad you mentioned the Summer Explorers Camp for CTE, that middle school students, all the work that we're doing to make sure all students on their way to high school know that these opportunities are available. And that's something that, you know, Brianna, Nathan, and all the, the students. Jabari, oh, there you are. You're still here. Good. The Jabari, that, that is one of my big, big things is are we, do, do students know at the right grade level, what's coming and how to prepare to apply?
Right.
That's something that I really care about when it comes to all of our programs in middle and high school. And that you raised one of the, the great, the, the great ways that we're doing that. And then I think we'll go to Donald and then I think we'll, we'll wrap up after Donald and then we'll move to our second conversation.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So I'll keep it quick. Appreciate very much, Dr. Cadet, the presentation and all the information that you provided. I'm fortunate to be able to work with several of your teachers in the environmental agriculture and natural resources pathway. And one of the things that came up earlier was, was looking at buildings as opportunities. Not just the new buildings, but you know, all of our school buildings. And so we do have CTE students that are working this year on projects associated with food waste. In addition to the programs that were mentioned earlier, at Fairmont Heights High School and Gwynne Park High School. They will be engaging in composting this year, which aligns, aligns directly, right, with, with our submission associated with this work group. And, and both of those programs also receive grants this year to, to support that work. So kudos to the, to the staff and students associated with the program. They're in the planning phase right now and they'll be, they will begin waste audits soon. So that they can track the pre and post totals associated with, with their waste reduction efforts this year. And so just another way that students, both in their capstone class and in the EA and R pathway, the Supervised Agriculture Experience Project. And, and their Career Technical Student Organization, which is FFA and, and Manners. Are, are all engaged, right, at the issues that, that we're currently undertaking. And so just wanted to add that in, that even in, in examples where, you know, there, there won't be a new school building next year. We're looking at student driven opportunities, sustainability opportunities within the building. Where they can directly say that we're making an impact toward mitigation and adaptation of climate issues. So I appreciate your support in that.
Absolutely. And the interesting thing, on a personal note, after working with the kids in environmental agriculture. I started composting, just seeing what they did. And then I got more excited about they went about when they were doing it. When I told them my journey, it was like, so it, it's, it's, it's not just them learning, it was also me learning. And then I've also shared that knowledge. So, you know, just even, so I'm, and it was interesting to hear the parents say how their exposure to the work out of that program changed how they did grocery shopping, how they did their recycling and everything. So yes, these programs are definitely having a ripple effect within, not just for our students, but also their communities.
I have to echo and just chime in because, you know, years ago, as, when I was in elementary school. One of my classmates' dad used to always compost right there in the, by the fence by the dog, and they had the best grass. And, you know, we're having so many challenges now with growing the same seeds of grass that we have grown for years, the fescues and the so forth. Whereas persons are having to go out and, and get Zoysia grass and, you know, do a lot of, what do we call it? Transplanting. And so the composting is going to be needed if you want to have a decent yard. Amidst other things.
Right.
All right. Well, thank you. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Cadet. Thank you, Dr. White. Of course, we would love for you to stay with us until the conclusion of this. But we understand if you do have to depart, you know, for, for, I know how busy it is for everyone right now in our, our first couple of weeks of school. So our, our next panel is focused on our labor partners and how we all work together. And PG CPS Administration Board and Labor Partners, when we are moving forward, new policies and initiatives that impact employees. And so I, you know, I think I'll tag team a little bit here with Joseph Jakuta of, around introducing our moderator. But I, I did want to let everyone know that Martin Diggs, who is the president of Local 2250, did notify me that he had an emergency, emergency and cannot be with us. But I'm so pleased that Doris Reed, Executive Director of ASASP is here and President of SEIU Local 400. William Selman is with us. And then I'm going to hand it over to Joseph to introduce Elizabeth, Elizabeth Bun from the National Policy, who's the National Policy, National Policy, Maryland State Director for Labor Network for Sustainability. So welcome, everyone.
Thank you. We're, we're very excited to have Elizabeth Bun with us today. She's the former Director of the Organizing Department for the AFL-CIO, having been appointed by AFL-CIO President at the time, Richard L. Trumka in February 10. And I don't, I don't want to go in too much since, as I know, we, you have a lot to say, Elizabeth, and, and an expert in the field of holding these conversations between labor partners and, and in regards to the environment. So I will turn it over to you.
Great. Thanks, Joseph and Pamela. And I don't know if Dr. Cadet is still on, the screen keeps changing. But it was really fascinating conversation. I feel like I learned a lot and would love to learn more. So I'm, I'm with the Labor Network for Sustainability. And just very briefly, we're a nonprofit advocacy organization that tries to bridge the divide between the labor movements and the climate and climate justice movements. We believe in the concept of full spectrum sustainability, a healthy planet, healthy environment, but also a just economy. And you, you know, there's, there's, as we just learned, we're going to have millions of new jobs. And they're going to require some, some same skills, but also many different skills. And if we are serious about the kind of transformation that we will need to save the planet. We need to engage as if it is a crisis, an urgent crisis. And that means a lot of moving pieces, one of which is training new workers for the new jobs. But it's also really understanding what's going to happen with the economy. I, I, I think I saw today that President Biden talked about the cost, you know, people always talk about, oh, if we transform to a sustainable economy, how much it's going to cost. But they don't factor in if we do nothing, what it's going to cost. And leaving aside the fact that this is an existential threat, even leaving that aside, just the cost of climate, the climate crisis that we face. We see it every day, the cost of the wildfires, the cost of hurricanes, the public health costs of asthma and other lung diseases. So, you know, we are talking about a massive economic transformation. And to make it just, there's, I just want to say, there's kind of two pieces to that. And one piece is that with these new jobs, you know, the other crisis that we face is a crisis of inequality. And I know all of you understand that. And we have the opportunity, as we transform our economy, to address the racial inequity crisis, income inequality crisis, and the environmental crisis at the same time. And honestly, shame on us if we don't seize the reins and take advantage of that opportunity. So we need to figure out ways to make the new jobs that are going to be created, good, high quality jobs. This race to the bottom, really not working for very many people, working for a few people, but not for the vast majority. But by the same token, let's be honest, there are going to be jobs that will be lost. And it is also our responsibility to take care of, of workers who are going to, and communities who will be impacted negatively by a transformation away from fossil fuels. And that's a complicated area and, and an expensive area, but it's also critical. And I, you know, as Joseph mentioned, I worked most of my adult life in the labor movement with United Auto Workers and then the AFL-CIO. And I can tell you that especially in the private sector, workers are very terrified of what the transformation means for their jobs. And sometimes I think environmentalists say, but there's going to be all these new jobs. Well, you know, if you're making a job with, with healthcare and retirement security benefits. The fact that there's going to be another job in a different community at $10 an hour, $12 an hour, that's much, not much solace. And the, and the truth is that, that workers, you know, they have their own experience that, that causes their anxiety. Again, I come out of the United Auto Workers and we were promised with the trade deals that it would be a win, win, win for workers. And instead, we lost. So our country has not handled transitions well. But now it's our opportunity to do this the right way. So that's kind of the global, the global perspective that, that I share and my organization shares. But I think it's important to dig in now to what that means at the local level. You know, how workers that work for the Prince George's County Schools, they keep it running, they keep it warm in the winter, get the kids to school on time. Keep it, keep it cool, keep the grounds beautiful. What, what that means, what their anxieties are, what their fears are, and what opportunities might be created by this. So I'm going to, I, I, I think Joseph, we're going to kind of work together to ask some questions of the, our union panelists here? Is that, does that, am I got that right in terms of process?
I, I think first we want to have a board member, Boozer Strather, introduce Mr. Selman and Ms. Reed.
Awesome. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Well, you know, I, I guess I would ask, you know, Doris Reed, with your long history and with PG CPS, that you might take a moment to introduce yourself. And, and, you know, for folks who don't know much about, you know, labor partners within PG CPS. If you wouldn't mind just giving a little more of that landscape, since Mr. Diggs couldn't join us. Maybe, you know, if you, if you might speak a little bit to Local 2250 as well, if you don't mind. And then Mr. Selman, if you could, could do the same, that would be great.
Okay, absolutely. No problem. Yes, I'm, I'm Doris Reed and I'm the Executive Director of the School Administrators and Supervisors Union. I've been in this position for 30 years. So I've been through, I see Dr. Golson's my 11th superintendent. And some of them have been okay, some of them wish they never came here. So we represent all of the administrators, school based and non-school based. My union is the only one that actually negotiates two separate contracts. Because we have the certificated employees, which are principals, assistant principals, instructional supervisors. We also have the non-certificated employees, which are supervisors in transportation, HR, food services. So we're all of the basically mid-level management employees. We supervise all of the other union members. And for 2250, I, I will tell you, they are, they represent like the bus drivers, secretaries, food services people. All of that part of the support part. Mr. Selman will tell you, you know, about the support part that, that his people cover. And then, of course, you have PGCA, which is the teachers' union and their teachers and guidance counselors and that type of thing. I have always said about my people, especially the principals, there's something really wrong with them. Because I don't know why anyone would want to be a principal. It is the most thankless job ever. Because you're not only responsible for the students, you're responsible for the staff, you answer to the administration, you answer to the board. And in Prince George's County, you answer to the politicians. So it, and there's, there's just no end to the pressure that is put on the principals. And especially now with COVID, it, it's just insane. Because you're trying to run the school of 2,400 children who all have parents. While you're also trying to make sure that you're taking care of people and keeping people who might be infected out of the schools. So right now, there's just a lot of crazy going on. But that's, that's basically the structure of, of the unions and where we fit in. Did you want Mr. Selman to?
Yeah, that's, thank you. Mr. Selman?
Yes, I represent all of the custodial staff of Prince George's County Schools. Our jobs are to keep the schools clean, safe, warm and cool at the same time. I've been in the county for, this is my 51st year. So I was 45 years as a custodian and I've been president of the union for the past six. Like Doris, I've seen many changes. This is about, the COVID is about one of the most difficult tasks for my, my people. Trying to sanitize, keep everything clean, keep people safe at all times. It, it's a large job. It's, it's huge. And with the lack of staffing, it, it's a battle to just stay even, trying to make everything work the way it should. And the changes in the field of the custodians have been from someone just sweeping a floor now to computer work, so many different changes. So it's a challenge each and every day. We've gone from different chemicals, harsh chemicals to chemicals that are biodegradable. Chemicals that are less harsh. So we're trying all the time to move in the direction of green cleaning. And moving forward with projects such as recycling as well.
Thank you so much, Mr. Selman. I really appreciate both of you sort of grounding us in the, you know, this, this place and time around that our employees have in the last 18 months gone through massive change. And I know we've talked about that with our teachers and many of us have experienced it directly as parents. The change, you know, change can happen in crisis and change can also be planned. And I think, you know, we're, you know, working towards, working together towards plan and before more of these crises hit us from climate change. So I will, I'll just step back from here and, and I guess we'll have some, get some questions going.
Joseph, do you want to start us off?
Sure, I can go first. And I, I would like to thank y'all for, as a parent of a, a first grader now. I mean, again, have, making sure my son arrives to and from school safely, keeping his building safe. And, and running the whole show, make sure pickup is not like a complete, complete chaos. You all have done such, such great work and I'm so glad that we have such good staff, keep, keeping our students safe and healthy. And the question I did have was, so what, what types of training and upskilling and resources would be necessary to make this, make a transition to a more fossil fuel free school system successful for y'all?
Well, I, I guess I'll say, we haven't really had a lot of discussion amongst our members about any of this. And this was one reason that I was saying to Pam, I was really glad that she included us in this. Because we weren't really that aware of what was happening as far as the climate change issue, you know, in the school system. We knew that, you know, there had been some work done as far as the green schools. We knew that some of, you know, the newer schools, the things that were being put in place. But to my knowledge, the administrators hadn't really been asked what they needed in the schools or what changes should be, should be made. asked what they needed in the schools or what changes should be, should be made. I will say this is one of the problems with boards and administrations throughout the years. And it's not just boards and administrations, it's kind of the community in general. People come up with these very bright ideas and they start rolling with them and they don't realize you're not going to get them done unless you're talking to the employees, in particular administrators, supervisors, who are going to be the ones in the end that have to implement everything. So that, that has always been a problem of our, our people being left out until usually at the end. It's like, okay, we've put this whole program together. Now you go figure it out. So, you know, we're hoping by being involved this early that that won't be the same when, of the outcome of this committee.
That's great. And I'll ask a follow-up question that segues right into this. And hopefully William will help us out here. You know, you're speaking to a number of management here and you do in your daily, daily work life. How, how should management approach these kinds of issues? What's the best way to communicate a transition of the kind that we're talking about?
I, I think the best thing to do is when you come up with the idea, reach out to the employees right away. Include the employees right from the beginning. Because a lot of times when they pull us in at the end, they have to go back and make big changes to the plan. So they just spent months doing something that, you know, Selman's people, our people, whoever could have told them in the beginning, that won't work. So I think that's the critical thing is make sure you include the employees in the beginning. You, you can't be in the Sasser Building and run the school system. It doesn't work that way. You have to talk to the people who are on the ground, who are actually going to be implementing whatever your programs and your thoughts are.
Great. And William, do you have anything to add? You're on mute?
They implement the program and then give it to us and it's all wrong. So if they would start with us, include the workers into the planning stage, it would save so much time and effort.
Thanks. We'll turn it back to you, Joseph.
Well, we did want to, we did want to see if others on the, on the work group have any questions. So as before, raise your hand so we know you're interested in asking one. And I'll wait a second. And it looks like Councilmember Taveras has something to ask.
Do you speak amongst each other in terms of, well, first let me say thank you for coming. Because typically, I mean, I know you guys have a lot going on yourselves. So thank you for taking time to participate on something that we feel is very important. And so, thank you for being here. Um, you've seen all the madness that's been going on with the board and everything. Do y'all talk amongst yourselves about this and, and figure out how, how to eliminate all this? And, and, and talk about, because I think a lot of the decisions have been made. Like Mr. Selman said, you know, where maybe y'all's input wasn't involved, right? How do you get ahead of, well, first, how do you get ahead of the curve and how do you work within your organizations to, to support good candidates to be on the board?
Well, well, first let me say, hey Danny, nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
But I will say the, the four school system unions do work very well together. You know, we do have our separate meetings where we get together to discuss issues to come and we look at, you know, what's going to affect each of us. And usually, you know, whatever affects one affects the others. So we, we have always throughout the years been, been able to work very well together. And that, that's been a big plus for us. And we, we do reach out and I have to say, Dr. Golson has been better than most a, and as far as involving us. Because like there would be, there's a whole list of committees that the board, the administrations have, working on various issues. And for many years, we were not included. And so they would talk to like county council members and say, oh yes, we, we had union representatives on the committee. No, you didn't. You had principals on there or assistant principals. They weren't representing the union. And we have to explain this then, they're representing themselves as individuals. If the union leadership doesn't assign these people to the committee, you don't have union representation. And that's been a problem that they would have these individuals on here who are speaking only for themselves, would give them all this input and they would think that they're dealing with the union. And again, we come to the end and they're saying, well, you all were involved. No, we weren't. We don't even know what you're talking about. And as Selman said, then it's, you know, months and sometimes years worth of work that you basically just threw out the window because it didn't work because you didn't have the right people out there.
Can I make a comment too on that? How are you, Councilmember Taveras? Very nice to see you. I, I also serve in the role of the labor liaison to the CEO. And I've been in that role for three years and I work very closely with Doris Reed, who I've known for many years and Mr. Selman and all of the labor partners. And Dr. Golson has a very close relationship with each one of them. And the labor partners meet regularly together. And a lot of these topics are discussed. This one in particular has not been on our agenda, but it's one that we should make sure gets on one of the next agendas that we have when we're all together. So, you know, I come from labor as well. And so that's how I know the partners. And this meeting is a real giant step in the right direction. I want to thank Board Member Boozer Struther for having the, you know, foresight to bring the labor partners together, to not only to introduce them to everyone on the working group, but to really become partners with them.
Thank you. Thank you, Valerie and Doris, as always. We'll be in contact, we'll be in communication. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So Elizabeth and Joseph, we have time, I think we have maybe time for one more quick question before we wrap up.
Sure. I guess I would ask, what, do you see any, William and Ms. Reed, do you see any, what do you see as the contract challenges? Or collective bargaining challenges that might emerge as, as, as the management engages in the greening of schools?
Well, I'd say I, I think Selman's people are going to be, have more issues than my people will. You know, I mean, I know our, our people are going to have to oversee it and make sure everything's in the right place, people are trained how to use it. But I mean, even, even now, and I'm, I'm not speaking for somebody who can do that himself. But I'm saying even now, they've had to have special training, you know, just, just to clean the buildings for COVID.
Yeah, I think that in the big issue along with the training is the lack of staffing. When you add more, a difficult job and less people, it really becomes an issue, even with the training with COVID. Most elementary schools only have one custodian in it during the daytime. And to do all the things that need to be done, it's almost impossible. And taking on other tasks such as recycling and some of the green effect that the staff has to engage in every day, it's really a hardship on them and something that we've been working in negotiation. We haven't been successful to get the additional staffing is what, what is the key.
Yeah, that, that's an excellent point that I've certainly, I know, thinking about from my perspective as a board member is, you know, again, budget season and new, new positions around management of this. So I'm, I'm noting that it's 4:55. So I want to thank, I want to thank Doris, Elizabeth and William for being our special guests today. I think this is, I know we didn't have a lot of time together today, but I think it's just the beginning. As we had a planning call and discussed that our labor partners will be fully, full participants in the drafting of the, the plan and, or, and or review. Of course, and I, I want to give a shout out to Joseph Jakuta, who, who was, you know, worked with me on really thinking through everyone should, who should, the sort of role of everyone for the work group. And then all of you have become everyone. And so that's how our, you know, invitation of Martin Diggs came about and how he, he did end up needing to ask Kevin Kennedy to represent him. But that was an important part of our, of our work and it will continue. And I think, you know, I think this will resonate with all of us, what, what you've shared around on what true, true partnership for change looks like. And we will all be, you know, taking that forward. Before I close our meeting, I didn't, I didn't want to rush to a close without just one double check in with Joseph, if there's any final, anything final that we needed to convey today.
And no, just that we will, we will see you all on October 6th at 3:30 to discuss various aspects of waste, both food and non-food.
Yeah. And, and again, right to Mr. Selman's, Selman's point, let's, uh, let's, you know, take action forward around if we're, you know, talking about topics that impact our labor partners. So all right, with, with that, we will.
Cole Waterman just put in an excellent comment on how the food issues that we are mentioning are aligned with labor interests. And maybe some of those savings that are found in the saving of food can be put towards more staffing. So Joseph.
Oh, great. Thank you, Chloe, for putting that in there. I did miss, miss your comment. So we'll capture that and we'll see you all next month. If anyone feels like logging back in, we do have the operations budget finance committee coming up next. So I serve on that as well. So everyone, take care. Goodbye.
All right. Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Take care, everyone.